Good evening and welcome to the July 23rd, 2025, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting will be held in person and online with the link provided at the Gray website, if you so choose to access that link and view the meeting or testify through that link. Role call, Georgia?
Here.
Anthony has been excused for tonight for business reasons. Derek?
Present.
Present, and Brad Fogg is present. We have a quorum. Noting in the quorum, we'd like to inform the applicant that any action we take tonight must be unanimous. It must be unanimous. So if there's a negative vote, something wouldn't go wrong, and we don't know if we'll have a quorum in the near future. I've been informed that one of our current members is not reapplying for a position, so we only have three people scheduled moving forward until we get more volunteers. So for those who may be watching or listening, I implore you to consider volunteering for the Town of Gray's Zoning Board of Appeals, which plays an important role in what happens in town. For instance, if a person wants to, let's say, build a shed, and they want it set a little bit closer to the property line than 50 feet, they would have to come to the Zoning Board of Appeals and say, could I have a setback of 25 feet? And we would consider that, and that's how they could build the shed. Or if they have an issue with a building permit being denied, they could come to the Zoning Board of Appeals and appeal the decision of the code enforcement officer and see if we would overturn that or not. But just little issues like that, I mean, that's, of course, you know, building houses isn't a little issue, but there are the small little things that happen in town that people might need exemptions from, and that's what the Zoning Board of Appeals does. It hears these cases, it mediates the cases between the town and the applicant, and we try to arrive at a fair and consistent position representing the needs not only of the town but of the applicant themselves. So I would urge anybody listening, retired, working, anybody that's 18 years of age or older, if you're looking for some way to give back to your town and give back to your neighbors, this is a viable way of doing that. That being said, that was quite a long opening statement. Approval of the minutes of the May 28th meeting, which you should have received by email. I would like to amend those minutes. Inger in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. About the 8th line now, where 34 O'Randall Road is in the middle. I'd like to note that Brad Fogg was a little concerned, so on and so forth, that the information you provided is not pertinent to the issue at hand, and that was relevant to the alleged criminal complaint allegations that an abutter was bringing forward concerning the applicant. And that's not relevant to anything that the board has authority over, so we want to make that clear, that we weren't saying that all of her information wasn't relevant, but that specific information about alleged criminal history was not relevant or pertinent to his application. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that the minutes be approved.
Is there a second?
Derek Shirley, seconds.
All those in favor? Unanimous. The first order of business tonight is new business. Soft G or hard G, Tyler?
Brown G.
G, okay. Tyler Gee is requesting a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a 50-foot required side setback down to 25 feet and a 25-foot required side setback down to 20 feet in order to build a structure based on his property at 91 Whitney Road, gray tax MAC 069-041-039-001, in the Rural Residential and Agricultural District. I declare that the public hearing is open. Tyler, or anybody representing the applicant, would you like to step up to the podium, please, and tell us what's going on?
So Tyler and his wife are trying to build a garage at their house.
Excuse me, who are you, sir?
My name is Joe Turner, Jetstream Construction, the contractor.
Thank you.
So the setbacks, the current setbacks with the garage that they'd like to build would only really work if they were to move their driveway around the corner of this garage and take out a bunch of bushes in their house. Behind their house is a land trust, there's no houses on it, there's no structures on it, and their side neighbor is someone that they're friends with and has no problem. So we were hoping to gain a few feet of easement and able to put the garage in a lot better location and more usable. They'd be able to pull in and use their garage, and it would just look better with the property. We won't have to disturb their driveway and just be a better project for them.
I see one of the things the applicant brought forward was that if they couldn't, they would have to, like, reposition the garage to be in front of their house.
Yeah, the garage would just have to be spun on its sides. You'd have to pull in the driveway and turn around the corner and pull into the garage. You know, it would make plowing more difficult. You would also have to move the driveway and take out some of their yard, remove a couple bushes that they've had for a while, to turn into the garage. There's just not enough room with the setback on the side. So by being able to spin it just those, or gain those couple feet, we'd be able to spin the garage. They could use their driveway to pull in, it'd be easier in the winter for plowing. I guess that'd just be a lot more practical.
Okay, for my benefit and maybe the other board members, could you step up here? I'm having trouble identifying or seeing the line that I think we want to see. Is this the property line?
Yeah, so I put this dark line on here. This is actually the property line. This is just something off that you guys had on your site, but it's not accurate. Obviously, the house is here. So the property line now is actually this line here, which gives them from this corner is their 50 feet. This corner here.
Is it this line or?
No, it's right here, that line.
So it falls the edge of the?
Yeah, it falls the edge of the paper.
I don't think they're gonna help me. An odd black, kind of a black picture. Okay.
Hey, that's good.
So that's the existing property line right now.
So it's behind this little thing right here?
So right there.
Yeah, it's like right behind it.
Derek, just a second.
Thank you, yeah.
There we go.
Yeah, I just want to do what you did. My eyes are a little bit better than theirs.
Thanks.
Oh, that's what I thought.
Well, I guess we've settled the black property line on the black map issue for the future.
So right now, this back corner of their house is 50 feet off this property line. We're just hoping to move that to 25 so that this garage can be in line and out of the way if there's a driveway.
Don't go away, because the questions are bothering you while you're right here. What would be the additional cost in your, you know, really rough estimate right now, if the garage, in fact, back wall was along this red line? Is the long side the three bays?
The long, yes, the long side of the three bays.
And have the three bays here, oops. Here, here, and here, and still be inside the property line?
Because of this driveway right here, right? Like, if you have this driveway, they still have all this space. This is their property line now.
Yeah.
So by moving the garage this corner, this garage, this driveway really needs to come way out and around. This is a raised bed on their house.
Okay, isn't this part of the driveway right here?
Yeah, this is part of the driveway. They have, like, a shed out back here. They still use this area. So ideally, to put the shed here or the garage here, just makes it the most usable for the house. This would create a weird little corner that you can't really get anything down behind. You know, it makes snow removal on the property a lot more difficult.
I think, kind of a follow-up, what his question was, what would be the additional costs to do not the way you want?
They would just need, like, a lot of fill. So this part of the property, this back line is the highest part on this property. This is like a raised bed. This driveway kind of slopes down. So to have the garage anywhere in this area over here, it just makes the front corner of the garage grade-wise a dramatic grade change. So it would definitely cost some money in, like, fill excavation to have it even make sense.
Is it feasible?
It doesn't really make sense to put the garage in those setback areas. Just makes it a super weird location, and it makes it, to put it out of corner, like, we talked about it in late, I would put it out of corner like he had mentioned, and it just made this area getting into the house super strange. Like, a few stairs to get in the house, it would just like a, it would look out of place.
What do you mean by strange? Because I'm not like, I'm not a construction expert.
It was just like, kind of like a weird, like, funnel area. Like, this would be very tight, this corner here, and then it would open it up. It'd just be a weird spot. You wouldn't be able to do much snow removal down there. Get any trucks, he drives a full-size truck, you know, he's got some trailers. It just doesn't make, it'd be way more just useful for them to have it pushed back a little bit, and...
So from this point, let's say this bush here, over here, that's a downhill grade? Or is it fairly flat up there?
This is flat up here, but this, from here, everything just goes down the driveway. There are steps into their house, or, like, the grade of the house is a daylight house, so it's, I think, like, four or five steps up to a platform and then step into their So ideally, you know, down the road in the next couple of years, once they save some more money, they would like to do a breezeway or have the option to do a breezeway there. And then it could be like a squared-off breezeway with their house.
So there's a dip right here?
And then there's like a little, like, wet area upon the grade here. It's a little swamp. So this all dips this way. This is all kind of like a somewhat wet boggy area.
So the driveway check is basically a slow grade up.
This picture's, the original picture's better.
Oh, yes.
He should give us copies of that, so if you want to look at that, it's easier than anything.
And the reason we're leaving this gap here, how, is that like 20, 25 feet?
Yeah, I think 20 feet, 25 feet.
A long breezeway.
Yeah, good, with a bathroom, though, you know?
And what's back here?
Like, property-wise or just on their property?
Yeah, what's the, what's the lay of that land like? Is it like dirt or?
This, yeah, where the driveway is, dirt, and it's, there, you know, there's a big old rock wall right here and the land trust.
What's the composition of this soil right here?
Dirt.
And he would be plowing this, Tyler? Where would you be plowing the snow? Left or right of the house or the garage or between the garage and the house, oh, behind the house?
We'd be taking it to the left if the garage is straight on with the driveway.
Pulling over here.
We'd be taking the snow out to the left.
Thank you.
Better go back.
Does anybody have any more questions of this gentleman? Or do we want to bring Tyler up to the stand?
So they're looking for 20 feet, right?
Go back here. So they have, that's what I'm looking for, the application itself, no. That's it, great. I do this all the time. And both of them are stapled together. There we go. Thank you. The front setback, that's, isn't changing, that's the one along the road up here. The rear setback is 50 feet. He wants to glue that to 25, so that's by the rock wall. So this is 50 feet. He wants to bring it back to 25 feet here. And on the side, he wants to bring this in like 20 feet from here to here. Look into the map. Why do you need the side setback?
Just because the garage is 40 feet, and that would just give us a little bit more room for it to place the garage, you know, not right on top of the house.
So he's following this down, okay, 25 foot proposed is here.
So the orange line to the left of the garage is the property line?
Correct.
The orange line is the property line?
Yes.
On the left.
Okay, so proposed, okay.
This is just the brighter one, the original. I'll just look it up. That's your no actual, actual property line, and that's the actual property line there. So the orange is the actual property line?
Yeah, give or take a few feet. Like, I think the one on the map that was printed off is wrong for the back property setback line, so I don't know. You know, it's probably within a couple feet. I don't know if it's exactly accurate, but yeah.
Here we go again. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm a little confused again. On this map, is the orange line the actual existing property line?
Yes.
Except this is not, back here.
This is not.
Okay, so this line is an error.
That's an error.
This line is correct.
Correct.
And how far is it from here to the existing, to the proposed bar, garage?
So if it was moved here, then this would be in our 25 feet setback. Originally, when we committed, did this garage, it was going to be spun this way, and this didn't work. It didn't work because of this driveway. We would have to cut this out, do a retaining law on their lawn just because of the elevation difference. So then we looked at moving it this way because it just, like, made way more sense for the, for the build and for the property.
How big's the house?
24.
24 wide?
Yeah, 24 wide, it's probably 50 long. The garage is 26, 40, 40 long on the front, 26 feet.
And you need to, you need a setback there?
I just wanted to get the 5 feet, just in case it was going to be tight on this front corner here. The way this property, like, just like an obtuse angle at this, this is, I understand.
Yeah, I get you there. I get that. I mean, very honestly, and I'm only doing, you know, winging this without a ruler, but it seems to me that 50-foot house would fit very easily between here and here.
Yeah, but not if this is the property setback line here.
No, but I mean, I'm talking, this is measurement purposes. If I got 50 feet between here and here, why do I need a setback there?
Well, this is, this was probably 25 feet here. Originally, we were going to have our garage here, the side setback. It was with clothes.
I'm still with you. I still get that. But even on the crude elementary drawing, if this is 50 feet, and this is a three-bay garage, let's call it 40 feet, I still think that I could take this house and sit it here and here.
If you could fit it in between here, this would be, you'd be on the property line.
I don't care about that. I'm thinking, measurement-wise.
Yeah.
If this isn't, if this is 50 feet, I sure as heck got 50 feet between here and here.
I think in that area right there, you do, yeah. And the far, the far back corner is definitely away from the house.
Okay.
And then the more it comes down to this, driving down the driveway, the property line starts hugging it hard. So this is the important line, is moving this to 25 feet so we can have it in plain with the back of the house.
Okay.
If the side one, we can't get the 5 feet, like, we can still get the garage to be in a lot better position.
Good question.
Just so we have, so there was better placement for the garage, we wanted to move it a foot or two, and it wasn't like, all right, we're gonna have an issue with the town, we have to revisit it.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time, I'm just trying to understand.
He did it as a buffer.
Yeah, yeah, just to give us a little bit of room in case it was like, hey, let's move it a foot or two here, then I'm not trying to get back in touch with the town to have another setback moved.
And you think you need 25 feet to do that?
On the back, yeah. On the back, we definitely.
On the side, 20 feet.
Yeah, they wrote it wrong, so I need to move 5 feet on the side. I just wanted to take 5 feet on the side, so instead of a 25-foot setback, with only a 20-foot.
Side setback, okay. You need 5 feet over there.
Yeah, 5 feet on the side, 25 on the back.
And it looks like you got 100 feet. It looks like, it looks like you got 100 feet between here and here without a problem.
Yeah, I don't, this setback, the 5 feet was just, like I said, for a buffer. The back one is the one I need. I need that 25 feet to push the garage back so it's not a weird angle, though at this point at the house and in the garage.
I got you. I got you. Okay, thank you. Any other questions of this gentleman before we bring one of the applicants up?
No, I think I figured it out.
Would one of you like to go and take the hot seat, please? And introduce yourself to the, all the people watching.
I'm Tyler Gee.
Tyler, you answered a number of criteria and questions that we have to consider before giving you or granting any applicant. Would you go over those with us? I mean, part A, the need for the variances due to the unique circumstances of the property and the general condition of the neighborhood. What's so unique about this piece of property that actually requires you to need the setback change?
So it would be, so it's in line with the house and that we don't have to move the driveway that much? And so there's that telephone pole about halfway, we wouldn't have to contact CMP to have them try to move that. And then on that left side, there's its damp area, so it would just be, it would take a lot of fill and a lot of work to try to make that so it's a secure build.
And the damp area, again, here we go, look at this, I'm sorry. I do apologize. I, could you step up ahead? Here we go. And kind of like, just circle or point out where the damp area is?
So it's about pretty much all here, and then it kind of extends into there.
Yeah, no, okay.
So yeah, so if we put it there, it would just need to take a lot of fill to raise that up.
So that's more of a dip or depression in the earth right there?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, that answers that. Now we know where the damp area is. Does anybody else have any questions about letter A? I guess I'm wondering out loud, and maybe the others aren't, but is it drastically important when you say "in line with the house"? Do you have the garage doors basically facing the same direction as the front door of the house? Is that what you're getting at?
Yes. Because if we did try to move it to the side, which would be the only other area, it would just, one, be facing the house, which isn't the end of the world, but it's the driveway situation that it would be kind of right near that telephone pole, so we'd either have to move the telephone pole or it'd be like a 90-degree angle to get around that pole.
And on the map that was provided, the telephone pole is the dot closest to the house, or is it? Which one, which one is it?
Right here.
What would happen if this were the garage right here? Bay 1, Bay 2, and Bay 3?
Yeah, we sticked that out, and it would, it would just came out to, because this line I don't think is very accurate. I think it was more kind of in line with the driveway, the 20-foot buffer, the 25-foot buffer. So we were running into issues kind of on both sides.
How many feet do you have between the driveway and the property line now?
From, from, to this side right here?
Yeah.
It's about to 20 feet, kind of right, right there. So it, it looks like it's close to like 100 feet, but it's really...
Okay, so this, this line right here is not accurate?
No, I think it's more kind of like right around here.
Okay. That changes my whole perspective. Thank you.
Can I just add something, Brad?
Kami, yes, please.
They took this off of our GIS website?
Yeah.
Which is based on our assessing maps. Our assessing maps are used for tax assessing purposes only, not surveys. And when you look at aerial photography imposed on our tax maps, depending on what angle that aerial photography is, property lines and buildings can be 10 to 15 feet off, depending on the angle of the camera when they fly over. So these are only for zoning, for assessing purposes, and we tell people that.
Okay.
It's a good, you know, it's a good, like, kind of estimate, you know? They're pretty close in size, and they are plotted off from, you know, the Registry of Deeds and deed records, but it's definitely not anything nearly accurate in, or represent any type of survey at all.
Okay.
So that's why when he drew the prop, the garage on that property line, if they're taking pictures at angles like this, it could throw you off 25 feet when that gets imposed on this GIS map.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Does anybody else have any questions regarding letter A? Is there a motion for letter A?
Georgia Woodbury, I move that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the
I move that the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general condition of the neighborhood, so the proposed garage can fit on the back corner of property in line with the existing house.
Is there a second?
Derek Shirley. I second that.
Any additional comments? From anybody? All those in favor of the motion? Unanimous. Letter B, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of the abutting properties.
Derek Shirley. I motion that this doesn't do that, so I feel I'm okay, I accept that.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Any discussion? Any comments from the public? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Letter C?
Letter C?
Uh, the practice, Derek Shirley, the practice, the practical difficulty variant is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or prior owner.
Is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, second.
Any additional comments? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Derek Shirley, letter D, no other feasible alternative to the variance is available to the petitioner.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
I guess I would comment here that I think the applicant has made it well-known that he's considered, or they've considered a different position for the garage. They've considered what appears to be an area of property that becomes wet during rain or snow or stuff, but is not in fact a vernal pool or, or something that the EPA has to be, uh, or is concerned with. And in terms of snow removal and a grade of the property right there, I would agree. All those in favor? Unanimous. I would move that the granting of the variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Any comments? And I think the contractor, the applicant has, has explained that to us in terms of a small depression in the land. Has a tendency to collect water, but in fact, again, is not a vernal pool, is identified by EPA or anybody else that we know of. So I would say that the natural environment is not going to be affected.
And you, and I also can, I mean, I also agree and say, you know, even with their other moves, their other alternatives could actually have more effect on the environment.
Any other comments from the public? All those in favor?
Derek Shirley motions, the property is not located in whole or in part, or within the shoreline areas as described in Title 38, Section 435.
Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Question for the code enforcement officer, that is correct. Is that true?
It's not located in shoreline zone.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've all had a chance to, do you think, looking at the criteria questions below, that we've addressed all those issues?
I agree.
There won't be any proposed increase in vehicular traffic. We've talked about the land. We've talked about nuisances to abutting property owners. We know of none whatsoever and nobody's here to object. We didn't get any written testimony from any outside parties or third parties. The environmental issue seems to be the same. So I would make the motion. That. Brad Fogg motions that Tyler Gee be granted a practical difficulty variance from the standards established in the zoning ordinance to reduce a 50-foot required side setback down to 25 feet and a 25-foot required side setback down to 20 feet in order to build the structure located on his property at 91 Whitney Road. Great tax map, 069, 041, 039, 001, in a residential and agricultural zoning district. That the applicant must maintain a sound environmental barrier or appearance between his property and the abutting properties. Is there a second?
Georgia Woodbury, I second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any comments from anybody, including the public?
I just wanted to note that if you could just amend it to say that a 50-foot required, it's not a side setback, it's the rear setback down to 25 feet and that the 25-foot required side setback down to 20 feet.
Typical.
Have, have you got that, Inga?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five feet on the side, correct? Yep.
Yep, so that was, that was an error in the mo, in the, in the, um...
In the motion?
In the motion, so.
Okay.
Yeah, 50-foot required rear setback down to 25, 25 side down to 20.
Thank you. Inga's got, made that correction.
Okay, great.
Everybody else out with that? Any comments from the public? All those in favor? Unanimous. Sometime there in the next seven days, the Inga Connors are very capable code enforcement officer, assistant, I don't want to say assistant, administrative assistant. We'll have that typed up and we'll get it signed and out to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a scheduled adjournment, I have one other question. Other new business, are you okay with the notes or the ZBA report I sent to you for reading?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Is there any other business before the zoning board of appeals tonight?
I just wanted to let all of you know that, um, it, it, that we will be having a meeting next month as well. I'm just giving you the heads up.
Okay.
We do have, we did receive an application, so there will be a meeting in August.
Okay.
Okay, at, at least one right now, possibly two, but definitely one.
And Ms. Bunson and I talked about site walks. She asked if we wanted a site walk for this particular application. I, I told her no. And we kind of set a general guideline. If there appears to be a butter issues that we cert, and, and she could, we could tell from any input or written notices that she gets in, in the office that it would be okay to schedule a site walk as they do in other towns the very same night. If that would be convenient, we could do it like at 6:15 or 6:30, do the site walk, come over, and then have the business meeting. Would that be agreeable to everybody?
One of us clever.
Let's, let's go with that criteria if there are butters, notices, or the people that send in statements.
So do you want to do it on every application or do you want to do it if we receive public comment?
We, we want to do it if we receive negative public comment.
The, the only issue is, is with the advertising requirements and the timeframes, a lot of times we don't get that comment back until after you advertise it, which is at least two weeks prior to the meeting. So, you know, you could do it, you could determine it on a case-by-case basis. Or you could just have it be a standard, you know, condition going forward.
If we did it a standard condition, would we have to have it if there was no negative comment?
Yes, because it's publicly noticed and it's a public meeting.
Yeah. I think the way we've been doing it.
Do you want to do that for 6:30?
I don't think that you should do it for 6:30. I think that you should do it for 6:00.
Well, that might be hard.
Depending on, and depending on where it is, because if it is on the other side of the lake, that's probably at least 30 minutes to drive. If, if, around that timeframe. I mean, it takes me 20 to 25 minutes to get over to some of those places on the other side of Sevegal Lake.
But if, if we didn't start the formal meeting till 7:30, I'm thinking of people that might not be able to get here, get there at 6 o'clock.
I technically still have to be appointed by the town council next month, so I plan, I hope that goes well, so if not, then I don't know if there's anyone else that applied, but at this point, I, this is technically my last meeting until I'm appointed, if I'm appointed in August.
I don't see that as being an issue, Derek.
Okay, then if, yeah, then I definitely, 6:00 would be fine. I can make it work. Tuesdays are my only big day.
My recommendation would be to, to do your meetings and, and if you do have, you know, I think that from what we've seen together as a group, I would say that probably 75% of them, we don't have negative comment. So, you know, the other thing that you can do is that if you know, you know, you have someplace that you're traveling, you know, far on the other side of the lake, you could do a site walk on a different day.
Yeah.
And then hold your meeting. I've seen boards do that as well. Ideally, it's, it's great to do it like an hour before the meeting, you know, because then everybody leaves and comes here and you already know that that night's reserved. But I've seen boards do it on other nights, so I think that, I don't think you would have any way to know whether you're going to get negative public comment until even, even, even the day before the, the hearing sometimes.
Even with positive or no public comment at all, I would, very honestly, I would hate to walk down the street to look at a signpost.
Right.
So it's.
You know what I mean? I mean, if we want to limit it to setbacks and stuff.
Well, I think.
I think you should just do it on a case-by-case basis.
That's what I was going to just say, because it seems like.
I think that the board should just collectively make a decision whether you think it rises to that level. It's not a requirement, but it certainly has been helpful with some of these ones that you've gone on site.
And I think, I think a lot of the times we do resort to it when our wheels start spinning in the meetings, you know what I mean? When, when we're like, all right, we're not really getting anywhere fast. We should at least go take a look at this place. So I think that's kind of the general vibe of.
And I think that, I honestly think that, you know, we, we, we've all done this a while now and that you can get a sense of.
Yeah, that's what.
And that is pointed.
Yeah.
And that's what we did at, at North Raymond Road. We started the meeting, said, no, we really need to go take a look at this.
Right, correct.
And then we.
You have the right to do that and you can do that with.
I'll tell you what, let's, let's leave things as they are and then at the meet, time of the meeting, if we need to postpone to go look at the property, then we can do that.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend. The most efficient use of everybody's time.
Yeah, like I said, because I don't want to walk down the street to look at a signpost.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. And we'll, we'll have a good sense when the application comes in anyway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there any other business before the board?
None by no.
Okay, I would like to introduce Mr. Farrington, I guess, who is the new liaison between the zoning board of appeals and the town council. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And have fun on the ride. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Oh, Georgia Woodbury, I move that we adjourn.
Second?
I second.
Well, without objection, we are adjourned.
This is a quick meeting.